Welcome to the regular meeting of the Larkspur City Council for December 2nd, 2020. It's now 6:30 PM. As you can tell, we are still meeting by teleconference and video conference because of COVID-19 restrictions and Marin County Health Department's order to stay at home and avoid public places like this. So if you'd like to join us, the information is on the agenda page. You can either call in or you can email in questions during the course of the meeting. So let's begin with our roll call, please.
Councilmember Candell.
I am here.
Councilmember Hilmer.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harroff.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. That brings us to item number two, which is public comment. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to to speak to the city council on matters that are not on the agenda and are not on the consent calendar. People have also had the opportunity to email into the city clerk earlier. So why don't we begin and ask Allison, is there any emailed comment that has come in?
There have been no emailed public comments.
Okay, so is there anybody who is in our Zoom audience who would like to speak to the city council? And I see one hand raised, and that's Robin Mahler. Welcome, Robin.
I have Mayor Way. This is actually David Mahler. I just want to confirm, I'd like to make a comment on consent item 4.4. Will there be a separate opportunity for that?
Yes, sir will, David.
All right, thank you. I'll wait till then.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in participating who would like to speak to the city council at this moment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And that brings us to item three, which is 3.1, Measure B Pavement Repair Program Winter Update. I believe we have a staff report.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, members of the audience. I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so tonight we have an update on our Measure B paving program. Oops. Okay, I lost my first page somewhere, but so we come to you a couple of times of year and talk to you about our Measure B program. So tonight, we're gonna give our latest update, start out with a little recap on what Measure B is. Then we'll talk about the paving projects that make up Measure B, talk about the use of funds and how we've spent the money so far and how we're looking as far as the overall program goes, cost tracking. And then we'll get, for the first time, to talk a little bit about results. Now that we're a couple of years into the program, we do have some numbers back, so we can see the improvement in our streets. So as a recap, this effort started quite some time ago, and then the Measure B part of it started in the spring of 2017 when we did a survey among residents of Larkspur. And 85% of respondents listed street repair as a top priority. So then it became a ballot measure and the Larkspur voters did approve the Larkspur Street Repair and Essential Services Measure as a sales tax in November of 17. And then city staff worked on a five-year paving plan to accelerate pavement repairs. We came up with a plan to pave every street in Larkspur that had not been paved within the five previous years. And it showed an estimated cost of $25 million. So then we went out with a bond measure based on the sales tax revenue from Measure B. And that was in May of 2018. And then in 2019, we started with our projects. And then 2020 this year was the second year of our projects. And then so on from there. This is the list that was part of that adopted Measure B plan. This shows a number of projects that we derived based on neighborhoods and conditions of streets to pave all of those streets that had been identified in the plan. We called it a five-year plan, but we tried to project all of the streets to be paved over four years so that we could use that fifth year to capture any streets we had to push out because of utility conflicts or or other issues. So this is the same chart that was in the adopted plan. I've highlighted it with colors here to show the red highlight as projects that we've completed. And the green highlight is projects that are underway, not under construction yet, but they're in design. And so as you look at the columns, there's one for each of the four years. You can see the 2019 projects, the ramp and Project One have been completed. And then in 2020, we completed two of the projects. The Recon Two that shows up there that's in green because it's still underway is a project that'll actually be paved next year as opposed to 2020. And then Project Four, which is the last year of regular paving. And then a Slurry Seal project are the only two projects we haven't touched yet that will be in '21 or '22. This is a map version of the same thing. We have color-coded here all of the streets that were in the plan. The thicker gray streets are streets that were already paved before Measure B. The thinner gray streets are streets that are not in Larkspur's jurisdiction. So every other street that you see here that has a color is part of the plan. And I'll bring up a little mask here. So everything that's covered in gray are streets that we've paved already under this program, so up in the Greenbree Hills and the Loop Streets, west of downtown, and then out at the end of Madrone and Wilson, and then parts of Hillview Gardens. So this is covering the streets that we've paved already under the plan. The next group of highlighted streets here that are under the yellow bubble are all streets that are scheduled to be paved next year, summer of '21. So then if you look at the streets that are remaining that are not under one of those colored bubbles, you have all the orange streets, which was our planned Project Four for summer of '22. And there's a couple of outliers here too that I'll point out. Both Dougherty and Redwood Highway were scheduled to have been paved either this summer or next summer, but we're pushing those out because of other projects in the vicinity. We want to make sure we get that other work done before we pave the street. So they'll still fit within the five-year program. They're just being pushed to the end of the program. So where we are now, given that we've identified streets for next summer, is this week the letters are going out to all homeowners, property owners, residents on the streets that will be paved. This both gives them information that their street's going to be paved at some point next summer. But it also alerts into the fact that we do have a five-year prohibition of excavation that goes into effect as soon as the street is paved. Then nobody can dig the street up for five years after we've paved it, other than an emergency that has to be approved by Public Works. And so the most common reason for people to dig the street up is they either need to repair one of their sewer laterals or they need to upsize a water service due to a sprinkler requirement on a house upgrade or something to that effect. But most typically, the reason we see is sewer laterals. And so we do work with our local sewer districts, and we have included the letter that goes out to all the residents. From the city of Larkspur also includes a letter from Ross Valley that details the sewer lateral requirements and outlines their programs to help homeowners pay for portions of that work. The other project, as well as the Group Three project for next summer that we're proposing, is Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. This is being peeled out from the other streets as a separate project mainly because it's a different type of work. It's our busiest street, a lot of traffic impacts. And so we're proposing to do this work at night. It also involves work under the freeway. Even the underpass, Sir Francis Drake, when you drive under 101, the maintenance of that road is Larkspur's responsibility. So the paving of Sir Francis Drake, as it goes under the freeway, will be part of the Sir Francis Drake project. We do need a permit from Caltrans to be able to do that work. It's in their right-of-way, but we are responsible for the maintenance. So there will be a separate letter going out to folks that would be impacted by that project to let them know that it's coming next summer, and then also that it's proposed to be night work. Exact details of the night work and how we would arrange for traffic overnight and detours and things like that is something we're still working on. But we'll update folks as we get closer to that project. The other project that we're peeling out from the main group is the Downtown Core of Magnolia. So this is King to Ward. And mainly because there's a lot of concrete work that goes along with that paving. We're replacing all the sidewalks and curbs and gutters too. So we're gonna do that as a standalone project also next summer. And then we've just sent out a flyer to all the businesses and property owners on those two blocks to let them know that this project is coming next summer. And also to get some feedback from them to see if there's anything else they'd be interested in seeing on Magnolia while we have the street completely ripped up, all the pavement and all the concrete is coming out, and it's all going back in, would be an excellent time to do any tweaks to that corridor. So we've put a questionnaire as a Survey Monkey that they'll be able to fill out to let us know what kinds of things they would be interested in along that corridor. To the extent that we have funding to include those, this is definitely the time to do some improvements like that. So looking at the overall schedule, these are the projects that we're currently working on. Looking at a bar chart from left to right here, the red vertical line is right about where we are. So Group Two paving, that's a project we did this summer. We're in the process of closing that out. It's all paved. Now we're working on all the paperwork with the contractor to close that out, get everything paid. And then we're in design on the group through paving. Our consultant is working on that. We already have some of the preliminary information back. That will be advertised first quarter of next year. And then typically, we aim for June, July, August for construction, usually when schools are out because traffic is less. So that's the schedule for that Group Three paving, similar to what we did for Group One and Two. East Sir Francis Drake and Magnolia are on similar paths, working on the design now. They're both a little different. East Sir Francis Drake's gonna have a lot of permitting issues with Caltrans. We're gonna have to shut freeway ramps down to properly pave that street. So we've got a process with Caltrans we have to work through before we can have that project ready for construction. And then, as I mentioned, the Magnolia project's gonna have some outreach. And then talking with the downtown merchants about what that project looks like, how it gets staged during construction so we have minimal impacts to businesses. And then also getting some feedback on them if there's any amenities that we can work in to that project. And then, as is typical, as soon as we start the construction on Group Three, we're gonna be underway with the design of Group Four for the next year's streets. This is our fund tracking spreadsheet that we're using. So this lists all the projects that were in the plan. And so the first column is the projects as we're advertising them, as we're putting them out to bid. The next column is what those projects were called in the Measure B plan because some of those we've combined. For example, the Group Three project that will be constructed next summer is a combination of Project Three, Recon Two, and Recon Three. That's how the projects were listed in the Measure B plan. But we've determined it's best to advertise those all together as one project. And so that's how they're being grouped. The next column, the first one that has numbers in it, is what the estimated cost, construction costs were for those projects in the Measure B plan. So those all summed to about 25.3 million. That's the number that was in the Measure B plan. And so the next columns is us tracking how those projects are going versus what was in that plan. And so we have data from the projects that have been completed or partially completed. That's the actual spent-to-date column. And then the next column is our estimated cost of completing those projects. So while Group One was last year's project, it's been completed and paved out. There was a street that, for various reasons, got bumped from that project and still hasn't been completed. And so that's the 141,000 that you see in that cell because we know there's still a street from Group One that we have to complete. Similarly, when you go down to Group Two, that's a project we just completed this summer. There were streets in that project, mainly in the Hillview area that we had to bump because of a storm drain project that will get carried over. So, for example, if you look at Group Two, it had a 5.4 million tag in the Measure B plan. We just finished a project but only spent 2.7 million. Well, part of that reason is we deferred 1.4 million of the streets. And then as you get down to Group Three and Sir Francis Drake, we've updated the estimating cost because we've got detailed design now. So we've got a better handle on what those projects will cost versus the numbers that we had when we did the plan. And then the numbers for Group Four and the Slurry Seal are just copies of what was in the plan. We haven't started those projects, so we don't have any better numbers at this time. And so the last column is the difference between what was in the plan and what we have spent on that project or what we anticipate spending on that project. And so, as you can see, we were over on a couple and under on some others. But as it is now, the net of all of those is if everything else goes according to plan, we're gonna be about 1.8 million under that 25.3 million that was in the plan. And that's based on the, on better numbers than we had at the time we did the plan. And then what does, what does all this pavement repair mean for Larkspur? So the text here that's highlighted is an excerpt from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission's most recent press release on pavement condition. So we were singled out as well as another couple of communities for having an improved pavement condition index. So that's a rating of the pavement with zero basically being a dirt road and 100 being a brand-new paved asphalt street. So streets are surveyed based on how many cracks they have and how many deflections and things like that, and they get a rating of zero zero to 100. All right, that's my smoke alarm, but...
Is that in your house or at my house?
No, that's in my house.
Okay, are you almost completed?
I am, yeah. I'm going to... I think this is the last slide.
The presenter's apartment just went off.
Yeah, sorry about that. Okay. So yeah, don't put stuff on the stove and then go into a presentation. That's the lesson. But, um, so MTC lists a three-year average for PCI. Now, because it's a rating and it's subject to human error when they're measuring cracks and things like that on the street, they don't want agencies' PCI scores to be going up and down and fluctuating every year. So they actually report a three-year average to try and normalize what that score is. And so because we've done a lot of work in the last couple of years, the score that's being represented here is not a true reflection of how much better our streets are because that score is being dragged down by our score from three years ago. But it's still trending up. So what's being reported by MTC is a score of a 52 for Larkspur, whereas our three-year average three years ago was a 42, so a 10-point jump. But we do have access to the raw data that shows what those true numbers were, what the actual condition of our street is today. And that's shown at the bottom here. So before we started this, this program in 2016, our PCI was a 39. And of all the Bay Area communities, Larkspur was actually at the very bottom of the list. We have the worst streets in the Bay Area at that score of 39. We know now that having just, we just had our streets evaluated again after we paved the summer. And our actual kind of snapshot PCI today is a 65, which is a great improvement from from 39. And you'll see that MTC number go up steadily as we get more of our better years in that three-year window versus the year before we started the Measure B program. So that was the last slide. I am available for any questions.
Do you need to go check that, the stove top, or are you okay?
No, we're good.
Julian, I just want to jump in and emphasize that you'll recall our goal is to get the PCI into the 70s. So we are well on target to get our PCI into the 70s. So we're very optimistic with the trend.
Great, so I'll open the question, the questions up first to members of the city council. Do you have any questions of Director Skinner? It looks like I see Scott raised your hand and Dan Hilmer. So why don't we start with Scott?
Thank you, and I'm not sure who this is directed to. But the question is, it appears that we are doing better budget-wise. And I guess my question is, if we do go under budget, does that extra money go into the general fund since it was specifically allocated for this purpose? Or is there some, what happens to that money if we're under budget?
So the way that'll work is that we will only draw the bond proceeds that we need to complete the project. So if we don't need to draw all the bond money to complete the project, we won't do that. And so our debt, we'll pay a small penalty for that, but our debt service will be considerably cheaper over the long run. So that's how we would account for it. So that would translate into the Measure B fund building up a healthier reserve over time. It wouldn't be in the general fund, but it would be set up in a way so that down the road, there may be extra funds for the council to direct into other projects that were covered under the umbrella of uses allowed by Measure B. You'll recall that things like storm drains and essential services, particularly in the public safety arena, were also identified in Measure B as possible uses of the money. Right now, any excess dollars are being accumulated to hold a reserve to make sure we can make our bond payments comfortably, particularly in a downtime like this current economy.
Thank you.
Dan Hilmer?
Mainly a comment. I just would like to amplify the appreciation that we should be expressing primarily to our residents and voters for having the confidence to take on a project of this scale. Not many may appreciate the scale of this project, plus the fact that we're rebuilding a major bridge within the county at the same time. And someone much smarter than me once reminded me that the quality of the community is usually expressed through the experience of the quality of its streets and bridges. And I just want to thank our staff, Julian, for having the courage and professionalism to take on all of these projects. At the same time, it's a massive undertaking, and not many people will be able to do this, which, and make it, I won't say look so easy, but keep us out of trouble while we're handling all the challenges that such a project may pose. And also, Dan Schwartz, for being able to manage all of this while it's going on and all the other challenges we're facing at the same time. And also the consistent support of the city council, going through multiple city council members and continuing to have a strong unanimous support for the effort. I just think we should be very grateful and appreciative and proud of our community doing all of this work. Thanks.
All right, well said. Are there any other further questions on the pavement update from the council? All right, seeing none, I'll open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the public? It looks like we have one hand raised. Would you be able to unmute that person?
Sean Stevens, it's your turn for public comment.
Hi, my name is Sean Stevens. First, I want to introduce myself. I'm the, uh, the new commander of the American Legion Post in Larkspur. And I had one question for Julian regarding the ADA improvements. The sidewalk on Ward just east of Magnolia has a pole, a telephone pole smack dab in the middle of it. Is that one of the items that'll be upgraded for the ADA, under the ADA access money?
So the ADA access project that was included in the Measure B plan was strictly curb ramps. There is also ADA improvements required on Magnolia and to some degree at the intersections at Magnolia. I don't know if the specific, I don't, I think the specific pole that you're talking about is too far back for, from Magnolia to be captured in that project. But we do, we don't need to have things identified in the Measure B program. If somebody has a specific access need that's beyond the ramps that were triggered by this project or something on the main Magnolia Downtown Core, they can always send an email into, to myself or to the Public Works General info, and we respond to any ADA requests and evaluate to see if there's improvements that can be made in the public right-of-way. But this, the ADA access for this was not an overarching fix, every ADA barrier within the city. It was focused on the curb ramps. The other ones, we basically handle on a complaint basis. So I encourage you, if you have an ADA barrier issue that you'd like to bring to our attention, if you could send us an email.
You got it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Sir, I don't see any other hands raised in the, of our participants. Allison, was there any emails sent in during this time?
There have been no emailed public comment.
Okay, seeing that there's no more public comment, I'll return it back to us. And thank you, Julian, if there are no further questions. Thank you for that presentation. And one, I had one question, which was your, your postcard survey, the downtown business community, will that also be available for Survey Monkey for others to participate?
We actually had a conversation with our consultant the other day about putting that up for the, for the general public. And then we were trying to ascertain being able to determine where the feedback was coming from. So I would have to loop back with a consultant and see if we were able to resolve that issue. The, the Survey Monkey does not necessarily capture where the comments are coming from. So that's why it was set up as a direct targeted to these two blocks. If we were going to do something that was on a wider basis that had the potential for more feedback coming in, we would probably need a different way to be able to filter that information to tell where it was coming from and make sure we didn't get 20 results from, from the same person or something like that. But that, that's something that we're currently evaluating, yes.
It strikes me that having the opportunity to survey some of the users of that space, the consumers and customers might yield some information that they would, we would find beneficial for how they use that space too. So, all right, thank you for that. We will be moving on to item four. And if you want to unshare your screen, we'll have a little bit more room there. There you go. Thank you. So this is the consent calendar. Is there any member of the city council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion? Seeing none, and I know we have David Mahler in the audience. And is there any member of the audience who would like to pull an item for discussion? David, are you back? There you are. So let's let David ask which one he wants to pull and for what reason.
Well, I have a few comments on agenda item 4.4, the response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report. And so I'd like to have the opportunity to make a couple of comments on Larkspur's response to that, if possible.
Okay, well, we have no city council comments at this moment on any of those items, so why don't you go ahead?
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I think, I know all of you personally, so you know, I live here in Larkspur. And I'm involved in a number of community efforts in response to climate change issues. And I and several others working on those issues have reviewed the Marin Grand Jury's report as well as Larkspur's draft responses. And I have to say, the responses of several other Marin jurisdictions. And I, there was one thing about Larkspur's response that I just wanted to comment on. And then I have two more general comments. And that was there, there was a tone in there that really came across as kind of a defensive tone. And I think many of the questions in the grand jury's findings and recommendations that they asked for responses were really just asking for like an opinion or a thought on its recommendation or finding. And many of Larkspur's comments seemed to really be primarily to avoid making determinations on behalf of other jurisdictions. And I really did not see that that was the intent of the grand jury's report. So I, I just wanted to pull that out. There was that tone in there that you might want to take a look at, make sure that's really the way you want it to come across as, as rather, instead of just responding, yeah, we think that's a good idea, or we think it's a bad idea. Then there was one specific response that I wanted to comment on, and that's Larkspur's response to recommendation number six. And that's the one regarding the possibility of forming a climate committee or commission. Now, I get it, and I think everyone gets it. Larkspur doesn't have the staff or the resources to have a full-time sustainability coordinator. And what the recommendation was for a jurisdiction that doesn't have that, consider forming a climate committee or commission. But I really got to say that Larkspur's response that a climate committee or commission could not substitute for staff really fails to recognize or acknowledge the value that a climate committee or commission could provide to Larkspur. You may know... You may know or may not know, but several of Marin's smaller jurisdictions that are in the same circumstances, Larkspur of not having a, a staff member dedicated to those issues have formed committees or commissions specifically around climate issues. And they're Cora Madera, Mill Valley, Sausalito, San Anselmo, and Fairfax. They've all formed these committees and commissions for the specific purpose of identifying, doing some analysis and forming recommendations to bring to their elected councils for further consideration and, and action. And these committees and commissions tap into resources and expertise in the community rather than having to have the whole burden fall on paid staff, which Larkspur doesn't have for this purpose. So I, I just want to comment that I, I, and I think others think that Larkspur really should can, consider forming a climate committee or commission specifically because it doesn't have a staff sustainability coordinator. You know, we all are recognizing more and more each day that we are in a climate emergency and saying we don't have staff and that a committee or commission can't substitute for staff doesn't make that emergency disappear. One other thing I'd like to comment on that's very close to this, and, and that is it seems like Larkspur should consider developing and adopting the climate emergency resolution that acknowledges that urgency of our climate crisis and provides a climate lens for viewing all of Larkspur's decisions and actions. A climate emergency resolution, some of you may be familiar with it. It's different than a climate action plan. The climate action plans really identify issues and goals. And then realistically, they mostly sit on the shelf and get updated periodically. A climate emergency resolution is a simple thing to develop. There's lots of examples out there. And several communities in Marin have adopted them, San Anselmo, Fairfax, Nevada. And just last night, Cora Madera adopted a climate emergency resolution. And that's exactly the kind of action that a climate committee or commission could take on. They could develop it and bring it to the city then for some kind of action. It seems like a climate emergency resolution is a useful tool to help a jurisdiction understand and consider the climate impacts of its decisions. So those are my comments. I want to thank you for considering them. And
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I did see the Cora Madera's adoption of their plan last night, and it was posted on, on the mayor's website today. So I think that's some really interesting food for thought for what we can look at. Dan Hilmer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. David, I would invite you to take a walk with me and explain in more detail what we can do to help you either come to an understanding of what the city does or listen to you and hear examples in more detail of what you're describing. I, in principle, really appreciate your, your comments with regard to these issues. And I'd like to learn from you how we can work together. Thanks.
Yes, Kevin, you, your mouth, unmute yourself, Kevin. Oops. No.
There.
Yeah, there you are. You had a comment?
Yeah, just, just very briefly. I want to make sure that we have a, a shared understanding about the, the city's engagement with other communities throughout Marin County on this issue. We are a small city. We do have limited resources, but that doesn't mean we're not engaged. I'm participating personally, and I think two or three different committees working closely with Cora Madera to try to help coordinate with their efforts. Frankly, leverage off some of their efforts on mitigation considerations, but also throughout, throughout the county. So it, it, it may be that in, at least in my own view, that our best strategy is maybe not so much to do things on our own, but to make sure that we are integrated with communities throughout the area so that we're able to take advantage of their resources, provide our resources where possible, and just make sure that we're doing things in a coordinated fashion. That, that to me is the most important thing. And I think that's actually what we're doing.
So I, I think because this is a more elaborate discussion on this, and we have an agendized item, I think, I appreciate David Muller's comments, but I think we need to probably move ahead. And because we have not, we can't get into more elaborate policy discussions, having not agendized.
No, no, no. And I, and I don't mean to get into a policy discussion. I just want to make sure that it's understood that we're engaged.
Yeah. And we can continue this in, in future meetings, should the new mayor be interested in continuing them too. So that brings us back to approval of the consent calendar as written. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Allison, could you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Candell?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harrow?
Yes.
Mayor Wang?
Yes. That brings us to item five, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city is going through its winterizing processes. So you'll notice that our workers are out and about sort of closing down things for the, the winter. We've closed the fields. We're starting to convert some of our facilities to their winter uses, recognizing with COVID, a lot of our facilities aren't actually open. And you'll probably notice over the December period, we'll be a little less present as a whole, because that's typical at this time of year. But we are busy working behind the scenes. There's a lot of planning procedures going on that I just wanted to make the council aware of. The staff's currently engaged with the Transportation Authority of Marin on a number of conversations, such as the 101 580 corridor connector, issues around sea level rise have also come up lately. And we're also working hard behind the scenes to wrap up the general plan. So quiet for staff, but we're busy. And I just wanted to share that. And thank everybody on our staff who's working hard to keep us safe during this challenging time.
Are there questions of city manager? All right. You. That brings us to item six, the council members' reports. Do any of my colleagues have any report they'd like to report out to us about? I don't, we're not having that. Yes, Dan Hilmer?
You're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, I serve on a ad hoc committee with members of the Board of Supervisors, City of San Rafael staff and Transportation Authority of Marin staff, focusing on the planning projects related to the 101 580 connector. And I just wanted to offer that I attended a meeting of this ad hoc committee two days ago. It was a, a presentation by TAM staff of the process, timing, alternatives being reviewed, summaries of the various stakeholder groups and their feedback. And this is a multi-year project, which may be obvious, but it, and, and hundreds of millions of dollars are involved. And we'll be providing reports to the city council probably in the next few months on the progress of, of the work. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else who want to raise your hand if you have anything? Don't see any.
Yep.
Oh, Kevin?
Yeah, just very briefly. And again, just to follow up on the, the comments that I made a few minutes ago. I've been very active in a variety of different committee processes to work with other jurisdiction, or other jurisdictions throughout the county to help formulate new strategies for dealing with the climate change issue. And one of the things that I always like to point out in the context of those meetings is the recognition that the county has expressed in the past about the importance of, of what MCE Clean Energy is doing in order to reduce our overall impact on, on climate through procurement of renewable energy resources that are now distributed through, throughout its, its service area. That's to me, a, a, a very important part of what we, what we need to be doing. I, I just wanted to mention that we did have a, a MCE board meeting last week. There'll be some, some changes in the overall board administration for MCE as a result of a number of folks that are terming out or just not going for reelection, including our board president Kate Sears, who is not, not going for reelection. And she will be leaving the MCE board. We will have a new president of the board, Tom Butt, from the city of Richmond. And a new vice president of the board, Chanelles Scales Preston, from the city of Pittsburgh. And I was very pleased to be the, the one who moved for both of them to be elected into that, into that position. We're also losing some other terrific folks, individuals from Sausalito, Mill Valley, Belvedere, other jurisdictions. And we're going to have to do some regrouping in terms of how the, the board operation is conducted. But I think we've had some very productive conversations about how that will occur. And I'm hoping to play a productive role going forward in that, in that regard. So some nice changes in a way. Sad to see some terrific folks with great expertise leaving the board. We'll miss them. But very, very enthusiastic about the success of MCE as a, as California's first and best community choice aggregation energy provider. So that's it.
And all right, let's move on to, oh, Scott, yes.
Sorry, just one, one thing. At, at the last meeting, we discussed the renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard in preparation for a meeting that Kevin and I were going to shortly thereafter. The results of that meeting were that we all decided to take it back to our individual jurisdictions, discuss it, put it on the agenda, open it up to public comment, make a decision in the individual, individual jurisdictions, what we would like to do with the renaming. Not specifically if we choose to rename what the name would be, but just the question of whether we'd like to rename Sir Francis Drake Boulevard or not, and then bring it back to the committee approximately early March. So I just wanted to give everyone a heads up that we would, I, I would like to put that on the agenda, you know, early in the, in the new year, so we could have that conversation.
Yeah, thank you for that, Scott. I appreciate it. That, that is a process that's moving forward.
I think, I think, Madam Mayor, those, that will probably be the primary issue we deal with in the two February meetings.
Yeah. All right. I guess my, my report out is that we continue to meet with the, the Commons Foundation. We met virtually on Tuesday with the board, and they are continuing in their progress in fundraising for the new, the new Commons or the Library and Community Center Phase One. So I'm looking forward to seeing January when they can really launch. We did put out a press release and they're going to be using some of that information to continue to engage with their donor set. All right. That brings us to item seven, which is public hearing, and there is none. So eight is our standing 2020 COVID update by our city manager.
I'll be brief, Madam Mayor. As you know, we are clinging to being in the red tier, but
Falling off.
Yeah. We're working hard with the other jurisdictions to facilitate plans for our business community to operate under the restrictions combined with the winter weather, and strongly encourage all of our business community to reach out to the city so we can discuss their individual circumstances and how we can help them. I want to compliment the Fire Prevention Officers of Marin. They've created a wonderful document that provides guidance on how to safely warm an outdoor tent or outdoor area so that you don't create a fire hazard. And we've been evaluating different possibilities in the right of way for businesses that do not impair people's paths of travel. Strongly encourage folks to reach out. We have staff who are prepared to provide help and guidance in this regard. We also heard a briefing a little bit last week, and there was a meeting for youth sports groups on Monday. One of the concerns I want to caution the community about is we've heard of some exposures that relate to the carpooling of kids and parents on their way to youth sporting events. And want to remind folks that a car is a tight enclosed space and a, a very easy way to get exposed. So really want to discourage folks from, from getting casual about this situation. With that, Madam Mayor, I'm going to turn it back to the council.
All right. Are there any questions on this item of sort of our update on activities? Yes, Dan Hilmer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to comment on an aspect of our downtown specific plan that I would like to see in the future. I don't, not sure about the timing, but it might be worthy of a council discussion on how we can incorporate this particular aspect of the downtown specific plan, plan on a broader basis. And that would be the inclusion of what is known as a, the garden downtown zoning component that's within the downtown specific plan. It seems that that portion of the specific plan has particular applicability and is being promoted out of necessity because of the pandemic conditions. And the Garden Town, Town zoning includes, as part of a project, the use of setbacks, courtyards, gardens that are positioned in an area along the street furniture as a transition zone to the building when a project is, is designed. And I just want to mention that it may be something worth considering on a broader basis because currently restaurants are requesting in adaptation to the pandemic. And this may be, these conditions may continue for some time, taking up street parking spaces and pushing that, those sorts of uses out into the street right of way. So as new projects come in, I think we should consider looking at that to see how it can better fit with the changing conditions under which new development is considered.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other comments in regards to business item eight point one? I don't see any, and I don't see anyone in our audience with their hands up. So that brings us to item nine, which is adjournment. We have one last meeting of the year, which is December 16th, regular time, 6:30, and that would, might have some business items on it, but at this point, it's the transition to new leadership. So bring your friends and family to your Zoom meeting, which is what we usually do. And we usually have a, a little bit of a gathering afterwards, which we really can't do this year. So if you want to have your own gathering in your own house, that's good, or some champagne or something like that, because we can't do champagne at City Hall either. But in your own house, you probably can. So. So I look forward to seeing everybody on December 16th unless something else comes up. We will be transitioning to new leadership. Any other questions? All right. Well, the meeting is adjourned, and unless I, something comes up, we'll see each other in two weeks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good night.
You have a good night, everybody.
Hey, everyone.
Thank you.